Welcome to the June 27th, Tuolton City Council Meeting. Welcome again for a hot evening. And thank you for taking some time out tonight to join us. First thing we're going to do tonight is our Pledge of Allegiance, led by Counselor Grimes, not Counselor Grimes, Counselors. Ooh, tough day. It's been too hot today. Counselor Pratt.
Thanks for the compliment. Please, please place your hand over your heart and, um, I mean, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Pratt. Next up is our Public Health Announcement, led by Counselor Brooks.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, tonight, I just want to share some good news. Um, we are state ranked fourth in the entire country as far as saving lives during COVID. So I want to put a special thank you out to, uh, you, Mayor, and our city manager for the leadership um, in this city and to all of our citizens for, um, following safe practices and taking care of each other by doing all the things that we did and have our, continue to do, like getting our vaccines and wearing our masks and social distancing. And also just encourage people now that, um, vaccines are available for children under five, that we can get the last, um, vulnerable people that are still, uh, more likely to catch the virus, um, vaccinated and reduce our community spread even more. Um, and just, I know there's a lot of people that are sick right now. Luckily, they're not on ventilators in the hospital, but I know they're sick around town. And so I just also want to say, um, hoping everybody has a speedy recovery with very little complications during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number two tonight is a fireworks safety announcement, led tonight by Chief Peckering.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Counsel, and those in attendance. So we finally have seen a stretch of some warm, dry weather. Uh, so I'm sure many are excited to get outside and celebrate the upcoming holiday this coming up weekend or next week. So, uh, over the last three years, the Oregon State Fire Marshal has reported, uh, eleven hundred and seventy-three fires related to fireworks, which is equated to a roughly $4.9 million in damages. So fireworks are still a problem in this state. So, you know, fireworks that are purchased locally are legal. Uh, and the, the rules in Oregon say that if fireworks that fly, explode, that travel more than one foot in the air or six feet over the ground are illegal. And those may come from some places, uh, outside of the state of Oregon. So we don't want people to be tempted to, uh, drive to the north and, and spend some money and, and bring that stuff, uh, into our area. So, uh, it is a Class B misdemeanor, which can carry up to a $2,500 fine if you're caught with, with, uh, illegal fireworks in the city. Uh, the Fourth of July is typically a very, very busy night for the police department. It's one of our busiest days. Uh, and not only for us, but for our dispatch center. Uh, so they, they are typically inundated with calls that night, uh, and have to do their best to prioritize. So we want to remind people not to call 911 for fireworks-related incidents, unless there is a fire or, or, or any type of dangerous situation. Uh, we ask that you call the non-emergency number through the Washington County Dispatch Center, which is 503-629-0111. And most of all, we want everybody to get out, have a safe and legal Fourth of July holiday. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. All right. Uh, next up, we have a couple employee introductions. The first introduction would be from Susan Tyler.
Mayor and Counsel, good evening. I'd like to introduce Ed Jones. Ed comes to us from the city of Gresham where he worked for, uh, seven years. And prior to that, he worked actually directly under me at Washington County for about 12 years. And, uh, we're very excited to have Ed as a part of our, um, our building division team as our senior plans examiner. Uh, in Ed's spare time, he likes to work on cars, Mustangs in particular, and, and he plays the guitar very well, too. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Ed to say a few words.
Hello, Counsel. This is me. I appreciate, uh, appreciate you, uh, checking in on employees coming in. And I am, so far, it's been really great experience, very welcoming group, um, and it's so far a great team. I'm pretty impressed.
When did you start?
Sixteenth of May.
All right, all right, great. Okay, cool. Well, welcome to the city. Uh, you've got to enjoy the new, uh, City Operations Center, I assume, and, uh, it's all new glory. So I'm glad that you joined our team here. Um, as you've already been told, both the city employees had a front-facing to our residents, people, our residents love our city employees, um, very well-respected, and that, uh, they appreciate the work and the amount of effort, uh, city employees put into everything they do here in Tuolton, make it a beautiful place to live, and welcome team.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Our next new employee introduction is going to be from Kim McMillan. Welcome, Kim.
Good evening, Counsel. Uh, tonight I want to introduce our newest engineering tech, too, Chris Kwiatkowski. I'm gonna practice his name, Kwiatkowski. Um, Chris comes to us from the Sunrise Water District, and he did a short stint in West Lynn, and we're so happy to have him. He has, uh, three associate's degrees, I believe, related to water distribution, wastewater and water treatment. And he grew up in Orange County. He plays the bass guitar and has toured with bands. So I'm seeing something in CD, you know, some kind of a band happening here. And he will be doing the plan review and inspection on private development and capital jobs in Tuolton. So very excited to have him on board. He's gonna be the guy out at Autumn Sunrise, making sure they hold it to our plans and codes.
Well, welcome, Chris. Uh, how are you wearing a hat today?
Uh, I'm actually bald, so I'm constantly wearing a hat.
Oh, sorry. I'm like, oh, man, I'm sweating. You gotta, got a tuque on there.
Yeah. Uh, the, the AC's blasting in my house right now.
All right. Well, welcome. You want to have, uh, anything to say to introduce yourself?
Um, I just, I appreciate, uh, you guys giving me the opportunity. Um, so far, I've been here about a month, a little over a month now, and it seems like a great place to work. Um, it's a welcome breath of fresh air from my last two places of employment.
Oh, terrific. I'm glad to hear that, that, uh, we have raised a bar and, uh, hopefully you can be a long-term employee and retire from the city of Tuolton. So, welcome.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
All right. Our next item up is our Pride Month proclamation, led tonight by Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to take a moment before I read the proclamation to acknowledge, um, that, uh, we had a couple youth representatives that came and spoke at our last council meeting, um, and they were definitely pivotal in, in this process, along with, um, another community member. So I just want to acknowledge that, um, you know, we, as a community and our individual community members, we, we really do, um, value everything that's in this proclamation, and, um, I feel it was kind of a labor of love, um, with, um, multiple people coming together, um, for this effort. So I just want to say thank you, and I wanted to acknowledge those folks. So, um, declaring June 2022 to be Pride Month in the city of Tuolton, whereas the city council's 2030 vision is for Tuolton to be an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity, and access, and creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. And whereas Tuolton is a community that includes values and welcomes diversity in our community, including diversity of sexual orientation and identity. And whereas we recognize, support, and appreciate the valuable contributions of the members of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas the month of June is internationally recognized by the LGBTQIA+ community to commemorate the Stonewall uprising in New York City in response to incessant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas many LGBTQIA+ members continue to face harassment and physical violence, and LGBTQIA+ members are four times more likely to experience violent victimizations than non-community members, including fifty-seven gender non-conforming murders in 2021. And whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to straight cisgender youth. And each episode of LGBTQIA+ victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times on average. And whereas we remain steadfast in our dedication to eliminate the prejudice and discrimination faced by members of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas we speak, we seek to amplify the voices of the LGBTQIA+ community, including youth allies and student groups, such as Tuolton High School's Gay Science and Hazelbrook Middle School's Aqua Club. And whereas we believe that the rich diversity of communities in Tuolton is one of our greatest strengths. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that June 2022 is Pride Month in the city of Tuolton. The community is encouraged to respect and honor our diverse community, subrate, and build a culture of inclusivity and accepted. Introduced and adopted this 27th day of June 2022.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sacco. Uh, that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding something that's not on its agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in this Zoom meeting who would like to, uh, make a public comment, you can do so now.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Good. My name is Fernando Navarro. Thank you for having me here. I really appreciate you giving me the time to speak a little bit. I'm, has been living here for, I think, for like a twenty years, and then, uh, especially in Las Casitas for ten years, and I want to make, uh, my community, uh, the cleanest, the better. And, uh, uh, thank you to the, uh, Chief Gray for having a meeting with me before you right now. Uh, I used to, uh, make some concerns about the cleaning of the streets in my community, the parking space and, uh, the parking all, all around Casitas, the lighting. And then I, I have been working with Betsy, with the Council Reyes, like, for around three to five years already. And then I thank you for having me again on the city of Tuolton, working for making better city.
Okay.
So, saying that, we need a little help on, on, on my community, especially because I, I, I see a lot of abandoned cars and then speeding, kind of racing at my size. So if, uh, talking to Chief Gray, uh, we can go ahead and have a, a little plan to make this place a little more better than what it is right now.
All right. So you've reached out to the chief, and how about to, uh, folks as far as the street lighting? We talked to our Public Works folks yet?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and what, what, uh, community you in? What part of Tuolton? Because I remember you saying?
It's Stone Ridge.
Okay, Stone Ridge. Okay, thank you. I might have missed, sorry. All right. All right. And so you're working, you've been working with Betsy and Counselor Reyes, too?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Reyes.
Yeah, I just want to add that, um, some of the things that I, I think Fernando's trying to, uh, also convey the message is that, um, we might need a little bit more lighting in the area. We need, uh, Republic Services or whoever does the cleaning to be, uh, aware of what's happening there. And, um, this, this, just, just to be more, more, um, I think it's a little darker, dark in the area, and there's been some vandalism in the area. So if we can always look at having more patrolling and, um, I, I think that's the message that we're trying to convey. And of course, Republic Services is making sure that they, uh, announce or give us notice of what, you know, how to properly put trash away and clean up the area.
Okay. All right, because we can work with our city manager and with city staff to see what we can do to get those things happen for you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. The other thing is, uh, it is a lot of few abandoned cars, and then I don't know what, what we can do really about it.
I think Chief will probably have some ideas. All right.
Thank you so much again.
Oh, thank you for taking time out tonight. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
There is no other public comment.
Well, Bates is echoing. Woo! That's right. Going once, going twice. All right. Uh, that moves us on to consent. These items are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda consists of six items tonight. Item one, consideration for approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of June 13th, 2022. Item two, consideration of resolution number 5620-22, approving and authorizing provision of workers' compensation insurance coverage to volunteers of the city of Tuolton. Item three, consideration of resolution number 5621-22, authorizing personnel services, personal services, updates for non-representative employees for fiscal year 2223. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5626-22, authorizing changes to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 at that budget. Item number five, consideration of resolution number 5627-22, amending the city of Tuolton fee schedule and rescinding resolution number 5554-21. And finally, item number six, constitution of resolution number 5629-22, amend water, sewer, stormwater, road, and parks utility fee rates in the city of Tuolton and rescinding resolution 554021 and 557-21. Would anyone like an item taken off consent tonight and heard later?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion and a seconding discussions on the motion. Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
I've, uh, I vote aye also. It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports. Tonight we have our annual report for the Tuolton Historical Society. I think Ross is going to introduce our two illustrious leaders of the historical society. See his name there. Ross.
The other Ross.
I, I think you.
I introduced myself.
All right, so Ross, I, so you're doing the introduction. You're gonna take Ross, have Ross Baker take it away.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselors. Yeah, we are joined tonight by Ross Baker of Tuolton Historical Society. So we have a presentation that I will share, and, uh, go ahead and take it away, Ross Baker.
Okay, thanks. Well, Ross Hoover is firing that up. I just want to get the word out to the new employees, Ed Jones, who plays guitar, by the way, and Chris Kwiatowski, who plays the bass. Uh, we'll need some musicians, musicians for our Heritage Evening in September. So maybe their manager, Susan Tyler, and Kim McMillan can get word to them, and, uh, we'll get some inside music. But, okay, that's an action item for me. Uh, it was a pretty good year. I'm gonna go through the presentation pretty crisply. I'll pause for a couple of seconds at the end of each slide if you want to ask a question. We'll move on. Okay, Ross? Um, this is part one of two slides. First, the good news, and then I'll cover some of the bad news. We got the programs happening with regularity. I'll touch on that a little bit later. Newsletter never missed a beat. We got that out quarterly and all kinds of good things in there, including some new things that we've added, uh, like Tuolton 101, where we cover some of the basics of Tuolton history. And also a new thing we're doing called walking through time. If someone finds a historic landmark or a building or something, and they kind of take a selfie with it, we'll feature them in the newsletter. Uh, we'll talk about the history of what they took a photograph of, and also give them a free membership. Uh, Heritage Evening is back. I'll mention that some more later. Rentals are starting back up again. That's our largest source of revenue, and, uh, that's going pretty well for us. Um, the Heritage Center was awarded a Backyard Habitat Silver Certification, if you're not familiar with that certification. The, uh, Audubon Society, um, in conjunction with Columbia, uh, um, I was gonna say wastewater, but that's not the right term. The Columbia.
Land Trust.
Somebody will help me. Bridget, you're gonna help me?
Yeah, Columbia Land Trust.
Thank you, Columbia Land Trust. I appreciate the assist. Um, and we're really proud of that. That's on display there, and we're doing a lot of things out in our garden to make that possible. Okay? Now I'll go to part two, uh, bad things. We canceled Pioneer Days three days in a row. This for the fourth graders, you know, but this is typically held in June, so the pandemic just kind of got started and then never really was quite clear enough. So we caught three school years. We're working on a revised version of the Pioneer Days, um, and we really believe that that'll be up and going. We've had a lot of, uh, requests from local fourth-grade teachers to actually send out material to them as well in the meantime, and we've worked with them. Uh, unfortunately, Cindy Frost, our manager for, uh, five, six years, resigned in December. And, um, I'll talk about the new center manager before we're done today, but a lot of you knew Cindy and all the great work she had done for us. Uh, we did have a drop in our membership. We, during the pandemic, we kind of waived the membership thing. If people didn't want to pay, we kind of kept them on, thinking that, you know, it's tough times for everybody, but maybe they did want to quit after all, because we had a kind of a drop. Those that were, were waived were largely the reason why, uh, we didn't get a renewals, uh, when we went out. But the numbers are solid. I'm talking about six or seven members. Nonetheless, it's a, it's a negative drop. Um, and we had members that were unhappy with delays in our, uh, brick program, getting them installed and stuff. And so that's all caught up now, and they seem to be okay. Okay? Uh, we're not going to go through all these numbers, obviously, but over on the left-hand side is the membership information. On the right-hand side, I think that what I needed to point out, most importantly, this is only for three quarters, because we're three days short of me being able to do a full year. Um, we're at a hundred and twenty-two percent of budget. A lot of the revenue that was coming in during that time period, it was already in, like, memberships and so forth. So that'll, that'll end up the year a little bit less, and the expenses through the year were seventy-nine percent, and that'll end up a little bit higher. But overall, our revenue expenses will be in line, and we're financially, I think, in pretty good shape. Okay? Uh, here's some stuff. This is not too sexy, not too flashy, but we're kind of proud of it, uh, with archive rooms upstairs. If any of you have ever had a chance to see that, uh, it wasn't our proudest moment. It's now decluttered with new shelving, and it's amazing when you organize how much additional archive room you have. And we found out that we have quite a bit, and so we're very happy about that. We do have new inside-outside chairs that we've got. The green ones that we had were very comfortable, but they were also fifteen years old and kind of falling apart and very heavy. And some of our members, you can probably imagine that maybe the typical age of a, of a member, they just were not able to, to have those anymore. So now we've got great chairs that provide us a lot more flexibility, got a new laptop. And if you have a chance to stop in before we change it over, because it'll be soon, we have a veterans' display, including a slideshow, uh, that we were very proud of, that we did, uh, during the celebration for, uh, veterans, um, during the month of May. Okay? Um, I think our programming has really never been better. We're doing a lot of great job, we, uh, of jobs, getting those out to the community. Uh, we still, of course, have our partnership with the Ice Age Floods Institute. Um, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I think it's on the next slide. We also have a new partnership with, um, a paleo group, a National Paleo Group. It is the North American Research Group, NARG. You may have heard of them. Um, and with their help, we're looking at August. The details are not quite ready yet, but we're probably gonna have a fossil fest out on the patio at the Historical Society. And of course, that kind of fits right in with the whole Ice Age stuff. And, okay, we're back in person on our programming. We'll just move ahead now. Ross? Um, we have a traveling trunk that we're working on. This is some stuff that's on the horizon, not quite ready. This is basically a suitcase we can take out to maybe other schools, for example, that would be interested in seeing a few items about, uh, Tuolton's history. I already mentioned, we're kind of re-envisioning Pioneer Days, so we can get that going again. Uh, we're gonna have a new note card series, uh, for sale that Jenny Stout, one of our, uh, board members, is working on. We do have a lot of heritage plants at the Heritage Center, and these will be watercolors featuring those plants at the center. I mentioned NARG. There it is. It was on that, um, uh, that, well, we're really proud to have them. They have their monthly meetings at our facility, and, um, you'll be hearing more and more about them as we integrate some of their program into our calendar and stuff. We have online payment. I know it's not a big thing, but a lot of people actually want to pay with a credit card. For now, this is only for donations. But, uh, we're taking it slow, making sure we're doing it right, so people can pay with their, um, for memberships and stuff also. A third edition of Tuolton from the beginning, which is kind of our Bible, is in the final stages of editing, and, um, should be out and printed, uh, before this year is over with. And I already mentioned the whole walking through time thing that we now include, not only in our newsletter, but it's also on the, um, uh, on the webpage as well. You can see the first two examples of people uh, kind of taking selfies with local things. Okay? Um, we also like to celebrate the best of who we are. The, uh, this past year, Brian Clopton got the president's award. You may know, may not know Brian directly, but you'll know him from his work. Um, he is the one who always ends up at this excavation company, moving those huge, uh, glacier, uh, glacial erratics around for the city and for us. And Al Stewart, uh, oh, Brian also is the one that restored that nineteen fifty-something Tuolton fire truck, which we had on display, uh, last June. So he's done a lot of great things in the background. Uh, the Laffey Martinazzi Award, Al Stewart. Al is our photographer, and he just shows up everywhere, and we're so proud to have him. And, um, he just does a lot of things for us for nothing, which is our favorite price. Our, um, Jack Broome Scholarship this year went to a young man. I had the pleasure of meeting Magnus Graham. Uh, there's more information about him on the webpage, and also there will be more information about him in our newsletter. Um, we're, we're really proud of the work the scholarship committee does, um, with this, uh, $3,000 scholarship. So that's, uh, you know, yay for us. Okay? Uh, this is Rick, the new manager. If you haven't met him yet, pop in and say hi to him. I think you're gonna like him. Uh, he's a really personable guy. He's been in Tuolton for eighteen years. He's only the third manager we ever had. It's, um, we didn't want to lose city, but, uh, between Lindy and Cindy and, um, Rick, it's just the third person since 2006. So we've been fortunate in that department to not have a great turnover and always have great people. Uh, Ritz, Rick's got a bachelor degree in English, which I know I need, because I make lots of typos and stuff. Um, he has a technology background, which is a big plus for us, doing little things like that, that slideshow and other things, and, um, and just doing them and doing them right. So that's a big plus for us. Uh, so pop in and meet Rick. Uh, his email is manager@tuoltonhistory.org. If you have a question or you know somebody that wants to rent the place, reach out to him. Okay? And this is, of course, the board members. I think they're all the same as last year. Yeah. Um, and the, oh, last thing I want to mention is that our, uh, picnic is, our, our annual July picnic is Wednesday, uh, after tomorrow, Wednesday, the sixth of July. I gotta look at my calendar real quick. The sixth of July, it's in Community Park. Uh, we're gonna have food there. Uh, we're going to have, uh, an old friend of ours at the Historical Society, Dick Carmen of Reliving Radio. He's gonna be playing music from the fifties, sixties, and seventies. He's also gonna have some stuff on display. Uh, if you're kind of into antique radio and that kind of thing, he'll have a cool display there. And it would mean a lot to the members of the Historical Society and to me and to the board, uh, just to have some representation from the council. Uh, also, uh, the people we interface regularly, Ross, Julie, Tom, it'd be great to see you guys. Uh, anybody from the Parks and Arts Council, um, committees, rather. Um, those are people who help us so much. And, um, basically, any city, city employee or anybody who volunteers for the city, uh, come on by and say hi and buy something to eat from the taco truck. I'm done. Was there any questions for me?
This is for Ross, I see, Councilor Hatt's hand is up.
What time is your picnic?
Um, Doug, good question, I should've said that, uh, the, the food will be served from like five to seven, people will start gathering and the music will start playing at four thirty. And by seven or seven thirty, we're gonna be, you know, kinda winding down, so I guess the answer to your question is four thirty to seven thirty in that window.
And do you really have twenty-nine members that are over nine years old?
Yeah.
That's amazing, maybe you have longevity connections where you should.
Yeah, well, you know, history keeps you alive, gives you something to live for, yeah, no, they're great and we cherish them, we send them birthday cards and it makes it. Um, it makes it a fun challenge to make sure that we can find people to replace them too, when they decide that they um, don't wanna participate anymore for whatever reason.
And then my last thing is, um, I'm really glad you're bringing back the Pioneer Days and that. Um, I know several people that have been volunteers for that and I have a friend that even comes back to town just to volunteer, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think they have as much fun as the kids do, so I really am glad you're working on bringing it back.
Yeah, we are, and I don't wanna whine about volunteers, everybody in this um. Uh, Zoom conference has issues with, you know, to find volunteers and to make them happen, but we need to find a way to, that we can do it without having to have fifteen or twenty people there. Uh, and so uh, there's a lot of things we know, four or five biggest things that are real hits, like the land charters and the classroom and. I don't wanna get off on uh, too deep into the weeds on it, but uh, we have a committee working on it so that we can realize it with the resources that we have available.
My question's for Ross, Councilor Brooks.
Well, I just wanna thank you for your leadership, Ross, and um, for being such a um. Strong person in our community and I have to say that when I, because I'm the council liaison to the Tuolton Arts Committee. Advisory Committee, there are. Uh, committee members that are such big fans of you and the Historical Society. And especially because of the art programs and I'm just curious, you didn't cover them too much, but if you could share with us a little bit about. Those classes.
The, uh, well, we have a num, a couple of classes, they're uh, painting classes, um, they um. You know, we, we need to get those on our calendars so you can see them, so the public can see those. Uh, but yeah, they're very well attended and one lady has been with us for a number of years and the other one's relatively new. And um, what I'll do is I'll just take the action tonight, that we make sure we get those on our calendar, so the public can see them, we have most of our programming on there. But I think that that would be a good thing, they're also good renters for ours, us too, so it's a win-win, um, and um. Yeah, thank you for saying so.
Yeah, I understand the watercolor teachers are very well respected and they're really wonderful classes. That are made available through there and then the other thing that I just wanna comment on was um, gratitude around the lifting up the. Um. The backyard habitat program and the work that you do, I think the gardens, even if you can't get in through. The gardens um, in the postcard project or the note card project just sounds um, wonderful, so. Thanks again for all you're doing and hopefully I'll see you the, when is it, the day after tomorrow?
Uh, uh, Wednesday, July the sixth. And um, the information is also on our webpage and um, it's between like four thirty and seven thirty, music, food. Free, free COVID test kits, all kinds of great things.
Fabulous, thank you.
Another question for Ross. Well, did you also mention where it was located?
Sorry?
Where the picnic's located, did you say where?
Yeah, it's Community Park, the main shelter. I'm sorry, you know, um, the thing is, is we want this, of course. We love to see people from the city there because we're so grateful for everything that. That you do for us and we get a stipend each year from you also and Ross Hoover's been a great partner for us and. The thing is though, for this picnic, we don't wanna broadly publicize it um, to, to the, it's like for the members in the cities and stuff, because we do have a food truck there. That's, it's, it's something that's being done sort of to help us and to accommodate us and so forth, um, so um. The, the, you'll, you'll find it on our Facebook page, for example, and you'll find it on our webpage, but we don't make a big hoo-ha community about the picnic, so. Um, we want it to be a nice intimate event, it'll probably be, I don't know, fifty, sixty, seventy people there, I, I guess, so it'll be fun.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Reyes.
Hi Ross, how are you?
Hi, I'm very good, thank you.
Um, so I, I just, uh, pre-pandemic, you were in and just, um, I'm just curious what happened with this project. Um, you were recording people's hit, uh, live in Tuolton or like um. Like you were recording like first generations or first people that were coming here and then I think uh. You know, at one point you were gonna record the stories and then. You know, they were gonna live in the library for a long time and then people can come like their grandkids and listen to their story, to the. I guess, you know, future generations are back, you know, they're whoever came to, to Tuolton first, did you ever uh, complete that? Do you still need more people for that or where was that project? It, I'm just curious what happened to that project, I don't know if you remember that, but.
Oh, sure, sure, no, that's an ongoing thing, oral histories are an ongoing thing for us, so the answer, did we complete it? No, we're never done. We always wanna hear from anybody, we've just had a couple recordings within the last few weeks. Um, but we do have on our webpage, we, we build a beautiful webpage and we have to now. Take the time effort to move stuff onto the webpage, but if you go to page and you find it in the dropdown menu, you'll find oral histories. And if you go to the oral history page, you go down to the end, you get, you can click and go to our digital attic. And you can actually, it's not so, it's not so pretty, what you're actually doing is you're going to a Google Drive page, once you're out of the web. But you can see all of them we done, including the ones that we did at Viva Tuolton a couple of years ago, which were fascinating. And all of those are still residing, most of our oral histories are still residing in Digital Attic. But if you go to our oral history page, go to the bottom and click it, you can go play around in there as time allows. Uh, we move more articles from our attic, we move more oral histories from our attic, we move, there's all kinds of fun stuff in there. Um, it just, it takes the manpower to get it out there, but. More, most importantly, to your question, if you know somebody um, that we need to be talking to, to. To get their story down, we wanna do it, we've set up a regular time, it's um. The first Tuesday of each month in the morning is a set day where we set aside the Heritage Center to make sure we don't have any rentals. And we have a videographer or, or myself, sometimes I do it, sometimes um, uh, Mike from uh, Digipix does it. But we have fixed times and we really wanna fill all those slots uh, with uh, local people and their stories.
Yeah, I remember, I sent a couple of friends, that's why I was one, I, I wanna let her know, she asked me. Couple of weeks ago, I just forgot about it, but I'm glad I saw you and I'll just let her know where to find her story.
Have her email me, president@uh, tuoltonhistory.org and I'll, I'll connect her with our co-historians and we'll get it going.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, any other questions for Ross? I just wanna acknowledge Larry McClure is also on the Zoom meeting here and, you know, Larry's been a longtime member and former. Leader of the Historical Society, just wanna acknowledge Larry's work on the Historical Society with Ross, just say hello.
Yeah, Larry's still a leader, that's where most of the work gets done, is Larry, just a mouthpiece.
All right, well, thank you for coming tonight, Ross.
Okay, thank you guys for the opportunity to brag.
Okay. All right, that brings us to general business, I actually don't like that back, that brings us to public hearing. Uh, we now have a public hearing for consideration of resolution number five, six, three, zero, dash, twenty-two, adopting the same Tuolton budget. For the fiscal year commenced in July first, twenty twenty-two, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes and categorizing, categorizing the levies. And welcome, Mr. Hutz.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I won't repeat everything you just said, that was actually the start of my presentation, but you did such a fine job on that. I will just say that you have that resolution in front of you. Uh, Oregon statute.
Just one thing done, I gotta officially open the hearing, now staff presentation, proceed.
Okay, I'll come back, okay. So, uh, revised, Oregon revised statute required the council to adopt the resolution and adopt the budget prior to July first, twenty twenty-two, in order to continue operations. The proposed budget was approved by the Tuolton Budget Advisory Committee on May thirty-first of this year. I, and in addition to the budget that was approved by the Budget Committee that evening, the City Council has the ability to change the approved budget. By no more than ten percent of the total budget in each fund. Staff is proposing three types of changes to the approved budget this evening. First, carryovers for items that were originally budgeted in the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two budget, but will not be received or completed by Ju, by June thirtieth. Second, increases in expenditures for items that have arisen since the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget was approved by the Budget Committee. And last, a transfer of existing appropriations in a fund to other categories, including creating new categories in that fund. So the first type of change that we're proposing this evening impacts the Information Services and the Parks Maintenance Budgets in the General Fund. In Information Services, there was budgeted for placement printers in the police vehicles in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. They were anticipated to be received by the end of this fiscal year, but will not be received, so we're asking for that to be carried over. In the Parks Maintenance Budget, in the Parks Restroom Innovations Project, some of the fixtures for those restrooms will not be received prior to June thirtieth. And we're asking for a twenty-seven thousand dollar carryover in that budget. The second type of change will impact those funds that have personal services categories, those include the General Fund, the Building Fund. The Water Operating Fund, the Sewer Operating Fund and the Road Operating Fund. This change is proposed to adjust the budget for a three percent cost of living adjustment effective July first, twenty twenty-two for Tuolton employees. When we put together the budget, we had prepared it with a split of that three percent into two parts. Uh, one and a half percent at July first and the other one and a half percent at January first, twenty twenty-three. So we're moving that up to all be effective July one and so we're making some changes to the budget this evening for that. The last change is to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. Uh, again, when we put together the budget, it, this spring, we had a placeholder in there for planned and potential. Uh, uses of the ARPA monies in the capital outlay category. Uh, we're proposing two additional categories be added to that budget this evening. Uh, the first is to create a personal services category for one-time premium pay, payments to essential workers as defined by ARPA. And we're also proposing to create a material, materials and services category. To allow for expenditures in that category as you continue your discussions on the use of the ARPA funds in the coming months. Both of these changes are transferred existing appropriations from one category to another with no increase in the fund's total budget. With all these proposed adjustments, uh, in addition to the approved budget, Budget Committee, the total budget is. One hundred thirty-nine million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. By adopting the, the attached resolution this evening, the city will be able to operate, expend money. And incur liabilities for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, beginning on July first. Uh, that I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time, Mayor.
All right, so at, at this time, I'm gonna ask for anyone who uh, in the meeting would like to uh, testify in favor of the budget resolution. All right, any of those opposing the budget resolution? Anyone who'd like to just talk about their, you're either get for it or wanna pass on your feelings about the budget resolution? All right, hearing none, now questions for Don, Councilor Pratt.
I just wondered what the um, materials and services in the ARPA, what that would cover.
Uh, could be consultants, if, if, that type of thing, if you look to do, let's say, utility billing assistance program, that would ideally go into that category. So there's a number of things that you've talked about or we've mentioned in the past meetings and so that would just create that category, I did throw some budget in there. Up, that would allow us to transfer additional monies in if needed throughout, throughout the year.
Other questions for Don? All right, uh, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and ask for beginning of deliberations.
I'll go ahead and um, propose that we um. Accept resolution number fifty-six thirty dash twenty-two, that we adopt resolution, excuse me, fifty-six thirty dash twenty-two.
Uh, do I have to do a reading on this, Charlene, or adoption, just an adoption, okay?
Yeah.
So a motion is second to adopt resolution number five, six, three, zero, dash, twenty-two, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counselor Sacco.
Hi.
Counselor Hillier.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Counselor President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote aye also, the resolution is adopted unanimously, uh, and stick around, Don, we'll be talking to you in a little bit.
I'll be here.
All right, that brings us to general business, uh, for consideration of recommendations from the City, the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Anyone have a summary for that? Counselor Pratt.
Yeah, so we, we um, have recommendations for a person on the Arts Advisory Committee, one person on the Tuolton Planning Commission. And two people on the um, Tuolton Parks Advisory Committee. Um, those people are, for the Arts Advisory Committee, it's Dawn Upton, for the Planning Commission, it's Brittany Valley. For um, Advisory Committee, it's John Makepeace and our student for the Tuolton Parks Advisory Committee, we'd like to recommend is Claire Roach.
All right, so do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments.
Fair count.
A motion is second to accept the recommendations in discussions. Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counselor President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also, thank you. Uh, we had no items removed for consent uh, tonight, uh, we were not able to do council communications at the end of work session, so we'll do that now. Now start with Counselor Sacco.
Thank you, um. So I attended the WRWC where we reviewed the Willamette Basin Reallocation and Feasibility Study, um, so if anybody's interested in that. Um, let me know, I also attended um, the CORA, which is um. The uh, what we're calling the, the, the Core Area Tax Increment Financing um, Proposal Group. Um, and so we reviewed different areas um, of the proposal, talked about uh, possible plans. Um, and then I also attended the Commercial CIO uh, meeting. And um, where we did the same and um, I was excited to go and um, I know Kathy Holland was on earlier, but I don't see her on now, but thank you. Uh, for allowing me to attend a meeting, um, because it was really interesting to just see the um, the initial reactions. Um, of the Commercial CIO, so I really appreciated being there um, as well. Uh, I also attended the um, the tolling diversion committee uh, meeting, um, and. Uh, where we talked a, a lot about the same things that everybody is already um, fully aware of um, with that. Um, with the tolling and diversion, um, and we continue to meet monthly um, to continue those conversations, so thank you.
You, Counselor Hillier.
Hi, thank you, um, I did not, I have nothing to report.
Okay, Counselor Brooks.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, um. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank, um, it was a pleasure to do the coin interview for our B-City status and kickoff Pollinator Week. In such a fun, exciting way, it's not something I've done a lot of before and. All I have to say is that they made me look good. So it's really nice, um, and. Let's see, I'm sorry, I thought I had, oh, I wanted to also, um. Send my uh. My excitement around celebrating our first sort of official Juneteenth, it's an official holiday. And really want to mention, I read a wonderful article that was about how Juneteenth is not just for one community, but for all of us. And I heard, I didn't really think about it much, but then I heard a comment in the community. And I really want to point out that it is better for everybody that we don't live in a country, in my opinion, that has slavery. So that's something that is good for all of our community. And to understand that, I think it's really important. And I also want to mention that I attended a couple, I attended three different classes that were done, two for Pollinator Week, and one about master recycling through the Winita Pole Center last week. And we, one of them was about bees and maintaining mason bees. It was so full that we could have almost used a bigger classroom. And the master recycling class was really good. I learned a lot, and I feel like I've gone through trainings on this before. So Sharon did that, she did a great job. And creating habitat where you live was about the backyard habitat program, which is just a very interesting program. And I keep learning more and more about it and want to do it. So I just want to thank the leadership over there and the earthwise programming. It's really good. And I encourage other people to join in. Actually, this week, I'm going to be going on the recycling tour. We're actually going to Wilsonville and checking out Republic's recycling place. We have to be safe, and that's just a reminder, one little thing of not keeping caps on bottles that you put in the recycle because they can fly, be projectiles, and hurt people that are actually working in the plant. So there's so many different little nuances and things to learn about as things are always changing around this issue. I also went to the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee and just want, it's just such a great group, and they passed and made recommendations for the grants that the committee gives out. I had not seen them for a little while because I'm vacation. And so it was great to also celebrate getting the fourth wall painted at the park and the beautiful wraps that they worked on throughout the community. And just want to thank them again for their great work and also wanted to congratulate, well, thank every applicant that applied for our volunteer fees. It's always a pleasure to meet everyone, and we always want to appoint everyone. And congratulate those that we did appoint and encourage the others to continue to apply for other positions. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Counselor Reyes.
I'm not into report, Mayor, so, but, um, thank you. Happy Fourth.
Counselor Pratt.
I have nothing to report. I, right after our last council meeting, I got a bad case of COVID, so I kind of missed out a week or so of life. But, and I think we have a rock star Bates running the show tonight with COVID, so I just remind everybody to just be careful. It's, you know, it's still out there and it's a pretty harsh stuff.
All right, Counsel President Grimes.
Well, gosh, I am so sorry that you guys have been sick, and I am glad to see you up and around. I know it seems like at work, we're starting to get an email a day about people that are coming down with COVID. So I'm, I'm so sorry that you were sick and I'm glad you guys are back. I haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, but we have an ARB meeting coming up this Wednesday. So I'll report back on that after we have it. And I was happy, I think I mentioned this last city council meeting where we were talking about the ARB meeting, and we had been looking over the SEPA development that's coming. And I was really pleased tonight when we were having, the sound engineer was giving his report, and he kind of called out the SEPA development specifically as being very smart about the way that they had laid out their development to mitigate the sound and the whole traffic interference that would come off a Boone's Ferry. I thought it was really nice of them to mention that because I think that, as I said before, the developers of that particular complex, I think were very smart about how they laid it out, how they used berms, how they used plantings to really try to make the most of the location and make the least of traffic and noise that could booms very, so. That's about it for me.
All right. Back on, it's been so long ago, June fourteenth, I, along with Jonathan Taylor of our Economic Development Team, we attended the GPI event celebrating the resumption of international flights in and out of PX. Delta and Alaska Airlines had representatives answering questions on how things are going to roll out, new routes, how to do, how to new, how do new routes get selected? Pilot shortage, it was a terrific evening, about a couple hours of getting our answers questioned and finding what PDX, the airport, Port of Portland, is looking at as far as terms of expanding service. One of the things they're eyeing is, you know, direct flights to Mexico City. There's talk of more to Japan because the Japan flights never materialized because of COVID. So I'm gonna hear more to come from the Port of Portland folks there. On the twentieth, the Five Mayors Lunch was held. And no surprise here, the major talk of the five mayors here in the area was about M-Step and about the projects we submitted, just discussing each project and going over how it impacts our communities. Then I had another, be more means on the twenty seconds. One had a nice coffee with Metro Counsel Rosenthal for about an hour and a half catching up on some items of concern at, you know, his level, Metro wanting to hear what we're hearing as counselors and as mayor, and then of course, you know, what's going on beyond Metro's purview, but he, you know, he went, especially in Washington County because he is very interested in that. Then later that day, we had the Metro Mayor's Consortium Economic Development and Workforce Subcommittee Subcommittee Meeting, focusing on the importance of what we're gonna look at at the next legislative session and being the importance of daycare and the lack of daycare. Three counties are in a daycare desert. What can we do, one, to make it more affordable? How do we build out the infrastructure for it? What has to happen to have daycare centers open so folks can get their children into daycare? Because the example was given in Portland, actually in Multnomah County, you know, they've had that measure to pay for preschool. And the struggle people are having is they can't take their vouchers anywhere because all the places are full. You know, and Mayor, who was it? One of the mayors, blank spot, one of the mayors was saying, oh, Mayor Calway, says we've got to change our thinking and value daycare workers and the importance of daycare because we're taking care of our kids, we're taking care of our future, and right now, we really don't. You know, it's minimum wage jobs that a lot of people really don't want, so we've got to somehow elevate the importance of that, plus make it more available to folks so they can get back to work rather than staying at home. Because we all have examples of it's cheaper for the second spouse to stay home rather than go to work because daycare's too much. On the twenty third, the Twelton Chamber of Commerce has changed its board meeting, it's now seven thirty in the morning. So made that adjustment. And the June MMC, a regular full meeting was held, and spent quite a bit of time discussing Measure one ten and the poor rollout of Measure one ten from the state and how the public service agencies are supposed to support those folks to go into rehab and make this drug reduction program work are just finally getting funds that OHA is so far behind in rolling this out that a lot of the communities are seeing, police officers are super discouraged, that they won't ticket someone because they're feeling it doesn't happen, that nothing happens to them, or that no one's really going to rehab. And they've, you know, they're gonna work better with the state to get this rolled out better. They're gonna be working hand and fist, if you will, hand and glove with the local police departments because, you know, that's the most important point of contact. And, you know, find out what the struggles are and make those resources available because we're really good at finding resources to folks who are experiencing homelessness or are experiencing hunger. Right now, as far as drug treatment, we're dropping the ball, and one ten was supposed to help with this, and we got to fix that. And then we went to the other, next tough subject, which was the Metro is shopping their parks levy renewal and talking about the parks levy renewal being on the November ballot. You know, Mayor Snyder picked on me first. I said, Mayor Beavideck, why don't you tell how much you love the Metro Parks Program? And so we talked about, you know, Stone Ridge and the park and a lot of good stuff. And I asked for, okay, you know, in order for Metro Parks bond renewals, let's all have the same common definition of what a park is. And not be surprised, your definition of a park is diff, you know, different than what our parks are thinking. So I think Metro heard, you know, heard they're gonna move on with some of our advice because, you know, most of the mayors were semi-supportive but not seeing a lot of communication going back and forth between Metro and the cities as far as the levy and where the money's gonna go. And I finished the day off with Chair Harrington's Washington County Chair/Mayor meeting. As I sent you the email, the big subject of her discussion was the rollout of, you know, the availability of psilocybin and treatment facilities and growing facilities. Folks can start applying in January of next year. And the stance that Washington County has that they don't have the time to deal with this right now. So they're gonna put a two-year moratorium or maybe a moratorium on it in Washington County because they just don't have the time to deal with land use ruling. So I just wanted to, you know, fly that by folks because if you're gonna make any changes to the psilocybin as far as locality, you have to do it during a general election, so it's only two years. Most of the mayors did not feel it was gonna be an issue in their cities because it's so difficult, as Counsel Brooks said, to get one of these up and running. But I think because the county deals with a lot of, of course, unincorporated Washington County, be way more difficult for them to handle than it would for us if something was to happen. But I wanted to make sure you were aware that, you know, and again, OHA is behind on rolling this out because of COVID, but that, you know, this is part of Measure, was it one oh nine? It was one oh nine and one ten, that this is coming. I don't foresee it being a big issue here in Twelton, but, you know, we want to keep our ears to the ground if we think, you know, if it does become an issue. On the twenty fourth, did a ribbon cutting for the chamber at Envision Golf, that is where Boom Fitness used to be. So it's one of those interior golfing simulator businesses, and it's pretty nice in there. If you have a chance, pop in there. They've got a full restaurant, they've got a bar. And if you want to learn golf, they'll teach you how to play golf. And it's gonna be one of the cheapest places you can play golf because you rent by the bay, and it's sixty bucks for a bay and up to six players. And you can play St. Andrews in, you know, Scotland for sixty bucks with six of your friends. So I hope they do well. I think they're in a great spot, and golf is taking off in you know, people are really liking golf, and this has got the advantage of it's, you know, totally crappy out, you can still golf, just go indoors and do it. And finally, today was the Washington County Corning Committee had an additional meeting because the twenty twenty three Metro Regional Transportation Plan is being reviewed. So today's subject was the lack of transit availability, that how can we do a regional transportation plan when Metro is cutting routes? The Metro person got beat up pretty good this morning because many cities weren't advised about Metro's service cancellations that was in the Oregonian this weekend. Beaverton had no idea they're gonna lose two bus routes. So the question was, how did this go through? Was there any public input? Because this was ruled an emergency, there was no public input. The Board of TriMet just decided, based on advice, what routes to cancel. So there was discussion of, okay, you know, we were okay with service reductions, but we're not okay with service, total, you know, service cancellations. So how do we build, get people out of their cars, move it through the area if, you know, there's no bus service? And the lack of bus service in Washington County and the severe lack of availability in Clackamas County. So J-PAC, our Commissioner Phi, Mayor Delin, and Mayor Calway will be speaking to Metro and to TriMet, and TriMet realizes that right now, they're not hitting their marks. They have a severe driver shortage, as does Smart down in Wilsonville, but you got to figure out, you know, if people have a regional transportation plan, there has to be alternative routes of transportation. And it feeds into our climate-friendly problem too, that everyone's saying, oh, get out of your car, get in a bus, but there's no consistent service available to us here in Twelton. And it's even worse out in Sherwood. And think that's it. So any other questions for me? Counselor Grimes.
Thank you. It's concerning to hear that the MMC is saying that people in the police are having a difficult time with Measure one ten, and I was wondering if Chief Pickering wanted to maybe weigh in. I'm just curious if our officers are having concerns or hesitation , you know, centered around that measure, if that's something that's impacting our guys and girls and women and men. Did I say that right?
Yeah, the, the the unfortunate side of Measure one ten right now is that there's not a lot of follow-through after the issuance of the citation. I think, if I'm not mistaken, the last I had heard, there was very few citations issued in Washington County. And it was roughly about ten percent that were, that had any type of follow-through after the issuance of the citation itself. So it's not widely used right now because there's just not, after the citation's issued, there's not much that happens after that because the, the systems just aren't in place or they're not ready to go at this point. So I, I would agree that it's, it's not been implemented fully. And at this point, there's, there's just not a lot to it.
I, I think I must be a little bit more ignorant about this than I thought that I was. So when you say there's a lot of follow-through, do you mean the person that receives the citation doesn't do what they're supposed to do, or is it that at the point where they go before the judge or whatever, there's not any kind of diversionary option? When, when you say there's no follow-through, can you elaborate on that a little bit specifically?
So, so as of right now, if, if an officer comes into contact with somebody who is in possession of a controlled substance under the, the ORS now and the changes in the ORS based upon Valuable Measure one ten, they're issued a citation, one hundred dollars. If they don't show to their court date, there's no follow-through. The way that the law is written, actually nothing that's done, there's no follow-up backup with the, the person that was issued the citation. There's no mechanism in place to actually do that through the court system. They're provided, right now, they're provided a business card that has a phone number for them to call the resource for the, the drug assessment. And after that, what's pretty much out of our, our hands at that point. So we issued a citation, we provide the information on, they do get a date and, and what they have to do. If they don't show up to court, there's not a lot. Again, the idea behind that, Valuable Measure one ten is to, to encourage the drug treatment. And the, the unfortunate side of the, of where we're at throughout the entire state is that there doesn't appear to be the mechanisms and the things in place to assist with the treatment side or the assessment side after the citation issue. So our officers will interact with, with the, the community member. We issue the citation, you know, we'll, we will, the narcotics and for destruction or for evidentiary purposes. And they're issued a citation, and then they're, they're off into the system. And the unfortunate side is that the backside of that system isn't as robust as we hoped it to be at this point.
If someone isn't following through what they're supposed to do, and they, let's say, they come into a situation where they're looking at a second citation, is there any escalation of the level of the charge? Or is it just they get a citation to do with as? Is there any escalation of the level of the charge or is it just they get a citation to do with as? Because I, I, I guess I, I'm not as familiar with the penalty side of that measure, other than I knew that the goal was to get people into some sort of a diversion drug treatment, I got that part, but I'm not really sure about like the level of severity of these tickets and if you keep getting them and not doing anything, does that put a person in jeopardy of actually doing jail time or?
No, um, well, potentially. Uh, the, the way, the way that it's set up right now, so it's a Class E violation. Uh, so a Class E violation, uh, I prefer some perspective. Um, if you look at the level of a, of a violation, uh, a uh, running a red light is a Class uh, B violation, a Class C violation. And uh, possession of controlled substance under ballot measure one-ten is as a level E, so it's farther down, so it's punishable by a hundred dollars. The, the way that the system is set up, um, to the best of my understanding is that if, if you don't show up for court or you don't make that phone call for treatment or assessment, there is no penalty brought upon you because the, again, they don't want to continue to compound on people who may not have the resources they need. The idea behind the ballot measure is to get people the resources and the help that they need. And so the, the, the way that the law is actually written is it, it doesn't compound on itself. If I remember correctly, after the third violation where they would, their third citation, um, it would be handled as it would be normally, so it would be, if they're in possession of, of a, you know, Schedule one or Schedule two narcotic, it would be handled as a misdemeanor and it would be to the District Attorney's Office. So it's, again, the, the idea behind the measure is a, is a um, it, it is, it's a good idea, the unfortunate side is right now that the back end after the citation is issued um, hasn't caught up to where we need it to be. If that makes sense.
The, the struggle with OHA didn't get the money out to the groups that are going to do the rehab and do the uh, you know, do the interception, do the intake and it just getting out there now, so it's been basically two years in delay. Um, and so uh, police have been citing people and if they do call, it was hit or miss that someone answered the phone. Uh, so they're trying to set up this, like they said, they've got multiple agencies, each county now is going to have a series of agencies that will handle the call now, it's just, it's just way behind, like Captain Pickering, I'm sorry, Chief Pickering is saying it's, this, this rolled out, the system wasn't ready yet.
How many tickets have we given? Do you have a ballpark?
I, not very many. Yeah, I, I would say, I, I can't give you a good number. I want to say the last that I had heard, um, county-wide in the, in Washington County, it was under a hundred, it was not very many. So because there's, there's just, there's no, there's nothing to it. And so the, the officers are almost feeling, you know, county-wide, because this, this has been discussed at, at our command level meetings and executive level meetings throughout law enforcement in Washington County is that it's almost, you know, we, we don't want to be handing out these hundred dollar tickets that go nowhere versus, you know, trying to get people help through whatever services that we can find and we can find available. Um, you know, trying to, to try to mitigate the situation the best we can.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate you answering all my questions, I learned a lot from that, thank you.
Why MMC brought it up, because this, uh, and the Oregonian had terrific op-ed and they had an article about this and the frustration across the state as Chief Picker is saying is that, you know, it's, and OHA is finally taking responsibility for it, but um, it's, you know, these folks need help and the systems aren't there yet. I see Counselor Brooks has her hand up.
Yeah, I mean, and, and the reasoning too of all the, the stopping of funds is complex, but I just am curious if they had a timeline as far as when they will get the money out, are you frozen?
Nope. Despite my background, uh, no, they're getting it out now, the question is, and this is where I get a little fuzzy. This was a three-year project and it should be up for refunding, I think, next legislative cycle. And will the legislature fund it again? When they're so far behind and they've got the negative opinion of the average resident and in the state of Oregon has a very negative opinion polling-wise on the impacts of the measure versus what they were told, what to do. Like Captain, geez, Chief Picker is saying, the goal is great, it's just they've, they've screwed up the plan, the execution.
Yeah, no, I understand they had a lot of trouble getting the funding out, um, and I also know that there's a lot of shorts around. Our state is not robust in behavioral health workers because we have no systems in place, so I hope that they get it out in a meaningful way so that people can get some help.
So, so if this isn't refunded next legislative session, do we just have these people, you're giving citations and they're not getting the services they need?
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, that's why, I mean, that's why we're all, it's, what, it seems far away, but that's why MMC is developing their legislative, legislative agenda, so we're ready to go when they open the next long session.
Well, and in the meantime, the cities are, they've divert, one-ten diverted the marijuana money uh, to, for that, and so we're down seventy percent of what we were getting. And, and yet the money is, they're having a hard time like um, getting the money out for this. And I know that there's a lot of reasons behind it, but in the meantime, nobody's getting the money.
It's starting, like I said, it's starting to trickle out, they're starting to get their act together, they're just way behind, they should have been the, as one mayor pointed out, shouldn't you have this program laid out before um, you put it on the ballot and had the mechanisms ready to go? But COVID hit and has thrown OHA, you know, into disarray. Counselor Hillier?
I, I do want to just note that Measure ten was referred to the ballot by signature. It wasn't something that had been vetted through the legislature first to make sure that all those mechanisms and levers were in place. So what the Oregonians passed is exactly what we got because it, it hadn't been vetted first. So, and there is a lot of money right now going into treatment centers, it's just not being connected. I mean, they have a robust leadership um, group with Measure one-ten. There are an awful lot of things happening with it, but it is um, it, a lot had to be vetted through the legislature because it wasn't legal the way we passed. I mean, we passed it by voting, but the measure itself wa, was not legal. So I just want to point that out.
That's a good point. All right. All right, so we're okay with me closing this meeting and starting our next one. All right, I'll go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting and bring to order the June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, twelfth and Development Commission meeting. All right, so at this point, doesn't seem like there's very much people left in this meeting, but this is an opportunity for anyone in the public to discuss or talk about anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Please limit your comments to three minutes, do we have every, anyone who would like to make public comment tonight at our TDC meeting? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda will be enacted by one vote, these items are considered routine. Uh, the consent agendas can, consent agenda items can be removed from the uh, consent agenda and heard later tonight. Uh, any questions on this one item on the consent agenda? All right, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion, we um, accept the consent agenda is read?
All second then?
All right, so I have a motion, a second for consideration of uh, adopting the consent agenda, I didn't even read it, did I? Just realized that, uh, the items on our consent agenda is item number one, consideration for approval of the twelve Development Commission meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. So the
And adopt the consent agenda is read this. I continue to second.
All right, I have a motion, a second to adopt the consent agenda as read finally. Any discussion on those motions? Uh, Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. That brings us to our public hearing, uh, and I'm going to head, go ahead and open up the public hearing for the TDC uh, consideration of Resolution number six-three-two-dash-twenty-two, adopting the twelfth and Development Commission budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July first twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Hudson, you're back on.
Yes, I took a little trip, but I'm back. And I, I keep having this thing back on, at least I turned the light off, it looked like I had this bright idea going on and we all know how that goes. Uh, the, the, if the hearing is o, open, I will give you my staff report.
It is open.
Great, I missed that part, so I thought I better double check. Uh, so you, you have in front of you this evening, Resolution six-thirty-two-dash-twenty-two, would adopt the TDC Commission budget uh, for the, the fiscal year commencing July first. Statutes require that Commission adopt the budget prior to July first, twenty-twenty-two and the twelfth and Budget Advisory Committee approved the budget back on May thirty-first. There are no proposed changes to the committee-approved budget this evening. The total commission budget is three million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. It is comprised of budgets in three funds, the twelfth and Development Commission Administration Fund, the Leviton Projects Fund and the new Southwest Urban Renewal District Bond Fund. By adopting the attached resolution, the Commission will be able to operate, expend money and incur liabilities for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, beginning on July first. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to anyone who's present at the meeting at this point to either speak in favor and opposition or just register interest in this budget item and this resolution. All right, uh, with that, questions from counsel? All right, if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and ask for beginning of deliberations on uh, Resolution six-three-two-dash-twenty-two.
Well?
Go for it, Nancy.
All right, well, I was just going to say, hearing no deliberations, I'll go ahead and make a motion for adoption of Resolution number six-three-two-dash-twenty-two, adopting the twelten Development Commission budget, making appropriations fiscal year commencing first day of July, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt Resolution six-three-two-dash-twenty-two, adopting the twelfth and Development Commission budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty-twenty-two, and discussion on those motions. All right, Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
And I vote aye also, it's unanimous, congratulations, Don.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we don't have roundtable here, so I'll just move for uh, a motion for adjournment. All right, got a motion, second to uh, adjourn our TDC meeting of June twenty-seventh, all those who have just raised your hand. Both opposed, all right, good night and uh, looking forward to the heat dissipating tomorrow. Have a good evening.